Oh, thanks. How come my way?
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our committee, the whole meeting for Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. We'll call this meeting to order at nine AM. And there's a recommendation that the agenda be approved as circulated. And today we'll be speaking on the heritage tax rebate. Mayor McQueen? Just your, your.
I'll move that. Other than I did send some correspondence that sort of reflected what the City of Owen Sound had requested to the county. I don't know if everybody got that. I don't know if it's worth discussing or not. I think, and I think I copied Judy as well. I thought maybe I didn't, but it was just, it was on County Council's agenda, but it was just like that request that Owen Sound. So I don't know if we're able to add that just as a, as an example of another municipality in the county of Gray.
I think we got maybe an email you sent.
I sent an email, yeah. Yes. Okay. So, but I thought council was staff as well.
I'm not sure. Clerk Finn Austin.
Thank you through you Chair Allen. All that is, is once the bylaw is passed, the municipality is required to request the County of Gray do their, pass a bylaw as well. And so that's what Owen Sound did because Owen Sound is the only municipality in the County of Gray that does a similar heritage tax rebate by law. So that's all that correspondence was is just a request that once we get a bylaw in place, we will make a similar request to the county.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's, that's fine. I just wanted to show that as another example of another municipality that was, was doing this process as well. Thank you. So I'll move that agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda and seconded by Councillor Dubic. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Anybody live in a heritage home? Seeing none? Items for consideration, item four point one, heritage property tax rebate by law. There's a guide to the heritage property tax relief. So I'll open it up for discussion. Mayor McQueen?
So I can start, and I see we have two representatives from our heritage committee here today. And I'm not sure if we have, I guess if we, if we want them to speak, we have to suspend the procedure by law to allow them to speak through you, man, through you Chair, Commander Clerk.
Clerk Finn Austin?
Thank you through you Chair Allen. Committee, the whole is a little bit more casual. So I think it would be appropriate that count or the committee moved a motion, but I don't think we need to suspend the rules of the procedure by law.
Okay. So maybe.
Do we want to move a motion now to allow people to speak if requested by council? Okay, Mayor McQueen, the councillor Allwood, any discussion on that? All those in favor? That's carried. Okay.
So, oh.
Go ahead.
So just a little bit of background. So the, probably most around the table know that the heritage, a heritage committee was established back in 2005 from a similar body to, to develop all the opportunity to have a committee. So when properties and from that process, that was allowing that committee then to designate properties that could be or potentially are heritage properties, which the committee had, has done over the years and created a registry. So from the, from that, there was the designated properties, but then there was a, a list of, I'm trying to think of that, that wording. It was a list of, of.
List of listed properties.
Yeah, but they weren't designated heritage, but they were listed. And now I understand through the province, and this is where we'll have better insight from our visitors today about how things have changed with that listing now, whether you have so much time, I think, to either designate them or you lose them off that list. That's one point. I know there's quite a, a list, a listing of properties through municipality that had been created. And again, the hard work of Nancy Matthews, who was part of that in the heritage committee that developed that. And I was on for, I think, four years of that. And then other councillors have been part of that through the time and it continues on today. So I guess technically this is 2025. So we've had the heritage committee for 20 years, believe it or not, which is, I guess I'm going to date myself maybe a little bit too along with everybody else. But it, it, it has been in place. We've had a heritage committee for that period of time. Other municipalities in the county, like the city of Owen Sound have had a heritage committee. I think Meaford, again, maybe our guest can fill me a little bit. I think Meaford has something or had something, a designation or a committee or the, the.
Yeah, just, just a second. Nancy, we'll need you to come to the mic if we're, if we ask you to come up. So just, we'll have to, if council wants you to speak, we'll.
I was sure.
We'll also need you to come to the microphone. So.
So, so maybe, maybe I'll make that request. So I'm just trying to give a little bit of a summary here of where we are today and stuff like that. So certainly Nancy, who is the Chair of the Heritage Committee. So, and I know Nadia, you're on the committee as well. So anyway, following from that, I know the City of Owen Sound has, for a while now, has, has made the request for property adjustment in taxes because of heritage properties and stuff like that. So I, I would think it may be at this time through you, Mr. Chair, maybe we invite the Chair of the Heritage Committee to speak a little bit of a summary, if that's okay, in the sense of where we are today and, and, or maybe Nadia, you, you, we should speak. Okay. So I, yeah. So if that's okay through you, a request to council that maybe Nancy can give us a little bit of a summary of what's happening with heritage properties. And I just did come up through the heritage committee. So.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Yeah, in, in Gray County, there's only four municipalities that even have a heritage committee. There's a committee, there's us, Owen Sound, Meaford. Meaford now has a heritage district and they are very much working. And I guess before we get into the actual, I know you're here to talk about the bylaw that's being proposed. But I think the important thing for everyone on council and everyone to understand is that it, it's not just a whim preserving heritage. It's, it's very important to the community. It, in, in communities that have done a good job of preserving heritage main streets, it is a huge bonus for tourism and for economic development. People want to go there, you know, and it, it, it's only half a joke when I say, you get discerning tourists to a heritage destination. You don't get the guy that's going to stop at Timmy's and throw his cup out the car one time down further up the highway. You get somebody that's going to stop for an hour and buy lunch at the Firehouse Restaurant and maybe wander down Main Street and say to somebody, well, that's a really old looking building. What was that? Why does it look that way? And those are the kinds of things towns that have taken the trouble to preserve that. And I'm going to give you just one example of where spending money will make money, because I know for every council, everywhere, every government, everywhere, you're counting pennies. The taxpayers say, well, is, is, are you spending my money and making it worthwhile for me as a, a community member? The City of Peterborough, about fifteen, 10 to 15 years ago, was basically dying. They had all the box stores outside, which is happening in many cities around the country, the, the province. But downtown, all the beautiful old buildings on Main Street that had living space above them, they were all empty. They, you know, they weren't paying very much municipal tax because they were getting the untenanted rebate on their taxes. And you guys know how all of that works. So they decided to, they put a lot of money into downtown improvement and heritage improvement and incentives for preserving heritage buildings. And yes, it was money upfront. By about five years later, the Main Street had been revived. All of the stores were reoccupied. People were coming downtown again because they wanted to, because it was nice looking and attractive. And by five years later, they were actually, they got a 400% return on the investment in giving those incentives to property owners of heritage properties to improve them, because those buildings were now improved, which meant they had a higher assessment, AKA paid a higher tax and they were occupied. So they were paying their full tax, not getting any kind of a rebate. So that it, it's just, you know, and that it's my passion. I go all over the province on behalf of Community Heritage Ontario and talk to municipal committees. So I'm really thrilled that this committee asked me to finally come and talk here. As far as the incentive go, I'm, okay, councillor Allen, you own a heritage building and I know how much work you've put into just restoring.
Now, let's just clarify, I own one, but I, it is not listed and not designated.
But it's a beautiful heritage building. And I know you and I have talked about how much work it's been for you to go to the trouble of repairing all of that beautiful Victorian fretwork around all the eaves. And that is why people who own heritage buildings, they, they love those buildings and they want them to, they want to maintain them and so forth, but it costs more money than a normal home. You know, if you've got heritage windows, you can't just throw them out and put in, you don't want people to just throw them out and put in loo in them. You want them to paint and keep the old wood. You want them to keep the storm windows. So the idea of designating the buildings helps to preserve them originally. That way they get support, but the incentive is to help them with the added costs. There's more costs for insurance, more costs for maintenance. And, you know, in terms of, I, I don't want to speak particularly, I, I, very much in favor and cities that have incentives. The one comment I will make is a lot of cities have both. And I know you're toying with, okay, do we have to throw out community improvement in order to justify having the tax incentive? Owen Sound successfully does both. And they find it's very successful and they've got three or four heritage districts. So they've got some of the most recognized heritage preservation things happening anywhere in the province. But as far as the act itself, if you want to address specific questions to me about what your concerns are, I, I do have some thoughts on some of those things.
Okay. Thank you for that Nancy. Councillor Dubic?
Uh, thank you Chair Allen. So thank you Nancy for sort of a bit of that background. It's very helpful in understanding the benefits of, of having this program as well. Just reflecting back on sort of why we're here today. At council, we're getting stuck on a couple of issues. And I, I think it's helpful maybe for us just to confirm sort of, you know, create that list of, you know, what those sticky points were, because, you know, we, we do want the input from the heritage committee to help us think this through. The two key points for, I think, from, you know, from our conversation was, one was around the, the annual monitoring. Ensuring is, is, so, so, so I think that, that was one in terms of, you know, is it annual or how do we monitor? Or how do we inspect? And how do we ensure that it's always in good condition and they're getting the refunds appropriately? And then the, the second piece was the, the amount of tax relief. And because we were talking about, you know, is it just a percentage or is it a percentage with a max cap? So those were the, I think, the two key elements, you know, from our conversations. And I'm just wondering if we can open it up, if we can talk about the, any other issues on the list. Thank you.
Mayor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I think the one was also who assessed the value. And I think Anna sent out an email that impact and maybe through you to maybe our treasurer to speak to that a little bit, because I think you'd send out an email that talked about your inquiries to impact and they, they had some advice since our last meeting as well.
Director McCarthy?
Thank you through you. As it is stated in the guide and later confirmed by impact, they will provide assistance for determining the assessed value that is eligible for the rebate.
So, because that was a bit of a stumbling thing is like you, you didn't feel qualified to do that. And, but impact stated that they would do that. So I think that was one thing that we were a little concerned as well. Thank you.
So on that, I can understand, say, there's, we were talking the other day about a staircase. So impact would tell us what percentage that staircase is in the whole house. If a, if the house, the whole house is, is designated, is it then 100% of the value or like this property with? Like there, there could be other buildings on the property and Director McCarthy?
Uh, so MPAC does allocate a portion to the land, to the other buildings on the property. So they would be able to break apart the, the assessed value of that home.
All right. Thank you. Mayor McQueen?
So the other part that councillor Dubic brought up was about the annual monitoring, monitoring, honoring. And so I think back to the farm tax rebate program, because that's a program that you have to qualify to get the 25% of its farmland. And so there are qualifiers that, that if they're, the property changes hand, it, the one thing it, it, there's a stimulator, which is through Ag Corp or Impact. I'm not sure which, but one, if the property changes hand or changes, maybe changes of a name, it could still be in the same or, or the, the qualifier is you have to have a farm business number. And then, and there's three different organizations that you have to either OFA, Christian Farmers or National Farming that qualify you for that. I wonder with this, and I just throw this out for discussion, that there, I think it gets to be a lot of work for staff and to do it every year. But I, I was thinking in my mind that if there was some kind of a trigger, one, one is every five years or if the property changes hands. So if the property changes hands, then that's a, I think that's a, a, maybe a trigger that would also say, okay, have the, is it, does it still qualify and, or whatever? And so I throw that out for conversation and I don't know if that's other jurisdictions, how they have that checkbox that, because yeah, as it mentioned, they could all of a sudden do that and then renovate it. The other trigger I think also would be a building permit. If there was a building permit taken out and there was a major renovation, I think maybe there would be a checkbox as well that, oh, you're ripping out that staircase or you're changing something that is, you know, so I think, I think back to the fire hall and the fire hall. That's not as good an example as maybe somebody's home, but maybe I'll leave the fire hall for now. But yeah, I just wrote it for, I, I don't think it, I think it's going to take a lot of staff time if you do it every year. But if there's some kind of triggers and maybe every five years that trigger of nothing changes or building permit or change of ownership. I throw that out there.
Councillor Wickens?
Thank you Chair Allen. So just talking about the staircase and stuff that's inside homes and private homes that maybe nobody ever gets to see. How do you? You know, if it's in private hands, you know, if it's, if it's outside, if people can drive by the, you know, I, I think that's fine, but I don't know. Carol, can you shed some light on that?
Nancy.
Nancy. I'm thinking Carol Matthews. You ever, you ever listen to Carol on the radio?
It's Nancy.
I was thinking the same, just, just a minute. I was thinking the same thing that in Nancy's presentation, she's stated that it's important to the community, tourism, economic development. But if there's, as you say, a staircase, who can see the staircase other than the owners? So to me, there needs to be a, a difference in, in the percentage of relief, whether it's the whole house that somebody can drive by and see as opposed to something that's hidden. So anyways, Nancy, go ahead.
The way the Heritage Act reads, the original designations of the older buildings, the entire property, that's it, is designated, the entire property is designated. In 2006, there was a change and more recently other changes. Now, when we designate, and you've done some recent designations, I'm working on one right now for the Euphrasia Town Hall. And you have to list exactly what the criteria are that it's designated under. With regard to MPAC, we have two designations we've done in the last couple of years, those 200 acre properties where there's about six or seven acres and of, that are allotted for a new modern home. So MPAC would, the value of that home and that six acres would be subtracted. Most of our designations, the, the main things that are designated are the interior or sorry, the exterior, what you see, and that's correct. But in a house like Hickling House, there's all kinds of interior things that are recognized, even the new designation we're doing, the original wooden floors and whatever. But, and, and, you know, whether that we ever have a doors open or whatever, yes, there's private houses. But other designated buildings, like for example, Munch, Muncha House, that's a public building. The fire hall is a public building. People are going inside those buildings. And what's inside those buildings is holding up what's outside the building. So, so it's all interrelated. My suggestion for inspection technically would be every year, and I think it's the way it's written, every year the person re-appeals, they send you a checklist that yes, they bought their insurance. And they, they can, you know, say, well, this year we had the woodwork painted or we had the brickwork redone, or we had the eaves troughs replaced or what, you know, whatever. And there's interior things they have to do because of brickwork and, and so forth, you know, and they don't have the same kind of insulation, for example, that maybe, you know, a, a modern building does. In terms of a building permits that you mentioned, they're already flagged. If they're designated, they're already flagged and the heritage committee and council are consulted about whatever they're wanting to do. But to me, and you don't necessarily need an inspection. It doesn't take much for a, and I know that your crews that inspect new builds and building permits are driving around the area. You know, you've got working crews driving around, you're driving around, I'm driving around. You're driving by what you know is a heritage house and you see that the window's boarded up and there's paint peeling off it. There's your red flag and you investigate. But a quick, like a, a really quick sort of drive by, just look at the road. You can see that the building's being nicely maintained and you assume, especially based on what they have submitted with their application, that it is being, being, but what they do in calling, what, what, you know, we've based, and thank you to Amanda for, or, or sorry, for doing that, you know, be basing it on calling, which has been a very, it's a simple plan. And, but they have a lot of designated buildings. They probably have 150 or 200. And they don't want people slipping under the radar just to get the money and not do the work, which is why, but you know, we, we're going to have six, maybe 10 buildings by the time other people apply, because, you know, there aren't that many people that want to deal with the permits and all of the other, the other things that are involved, even with an incentive. So I, I don't know that it has to be the big problem that, that it appears to be, by the way the bylaw is written, you just need that there in case you do have to call them and say, we're concerned, may we come? And, and I agree with Paul, maybe once every five years, but it doesn't need to be heritage expert. Anybody can look at something and see, oh yeah, that's nicely painted. The paint isn't peeling off. You know, you don't need to be an expert in heritage building to see that it, it's standing up and the walls are straight and, you know, it's pretty simple.
So we could also request photographs on a yearly basis or we could also request photographs? Yeah. Okay. All right. Councillor Allwood?
Thank you Chair Allen. For you, just in response to councillor Wickens' concerns or the, you know, the interior features. I owned a heritage property in Newmarket. It wasn't designated for 20 years. And we took a lot of pride in maintaining the exterior and interior features of that home. And we used to be part of a group of heritage homeowners in Newmarket that used to offer tours to people. So, you know, it's sort of like garden tours that the horticultural societies do. We, we would have people, attract people to our community to, to tour through those homes and open your home, open your house up. And if you've got a beautiful heritage staircase, that's a feature that people that are interested in those sort of things like this, like to look at. So, I mean, again, it's, there's an onus on the owner to, to do that kind of thing. But that's how your interior features can be a benefit to the program and to the community.
Thank you. Councillor, we'll go to Clerk Finn Austin first.
Uh, thank you Chair Allen. I just wanted to clarify, when I reread the CIP, it does say that applications for heritage committees would be approved for a two-year cycle. And in saying that, they still have to apply every year. So it would come to council once every two years. They would have to apply for the rebate every year. And in the second year, there, there isn't an inspection required. It would be a heritage maintenance report, which I believe is what Nancy was mentioning. So that would be where they say what they've done from when they applied till now, as far as maintenance goes on the heritage features.
Okay.
So I don't know if that helps provide any clarity, but I, I had misinterpreted it initially. So I wanted to just provide that clarity.
Okay. And when you mentioned the CIP, there, do we have the, the choice? We can do it through the CIP or can we just do a rebate or a reduction of, of property tax?
Uh, through you Chair Allen. Um, it's currently in our CIP and all it's waiting for is our bylaw. So we would have to make an amendment to the CIP to do that, to, to remove it from that program. And I think then you would just have to, if you removed it, you would have to have another budget line item specifically for heritage.
But if it's just a reduction in taxes, when we're doing our budget, we know we need to raise X number of dollars. Our treasurer, you know, that figures out the rate and, and we would just have to raise through the taxes a little bit more money as opposed to putting aside a specific amount into the CIP.
Um, through you Chair Allen. So it's not, it is a reduction in taxes, but they have to pay their taxes upfront and stay in good standing. And then we provide them a rebate.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Um, that way we ensure that we're not rebating somebody who's not paying their portion.
Right. Okay. I saw councillor Dubic's hand first. Go ahead.
Uh, yes. So I thought, I think it's kind of helpful just to break down what we believe the monitoring piece is. So, so can I just ask our clerk again, just to state, so what would happen in year one and then year two? Let's just, if, just for clarity.
Clerk Finn Austin?
Through you Chair Allen. Year one, staff would receive an application from the heritage property owner. The application would be reviewed by staff. The property would be inspected and then a report would come to council and council would either approve or deny the tax rebate. If approved, obviously they would get their rebate at the allotted time. In year two, the applicant, or the heritage property owner would provide an application to staff again with the heritage maintenance report. I can never remember that term. And staff would review that. And if everything looked good there, then staff would go ahead and provide the rebate in year two without it coming back to council again. Year three would start back at the beginning.
If I may just follow up, thank you. So, okay. So, so, so that's clear. And then regarding the, the maintenance report, you know, so as Nancy was stating, right? It could, it's, it's just like a, it could be like a bit of a checklist, you know, maybe with some, and as councillor Allwood was saying, like, you know, with some supporting photos to ensure that, you know, things are looking the way they should. And then Nancy, you also mentioned sort of the, the, sort of that drive by. So in terms of a, you know, mon, some internal, I guess, like central monitoring.
Actually, it occurs to me, this could be one of the things that the heritage committee could take on, just in terms of keeping, and I do it anyway. You know, I drive by most of our designated properties, even our listed properties regularly. I know what they are. I know where they are. You know, we can get the committee up to, so you're just, you know, I mean, every time I drive by Hickling House, I look in and okay, that's great. You know, everything's fine. Randy's doing a great job. And, you know, and, and the other thing is we have, as a committee. And, you know, and, and the other thing is, we have, uh, as a committee, uh, well, especially me, I have a relationship with most of the heritage owners. If they've got a question or they need some work, they call me. You know, they, they, they don't even come through you or the building department, you know, like Hickling House called me about the brickwork. And I wasn't sure why, I, I could see what the problem was, I didn't know why. And I had an architect friend join me at the property one day, and he explained why. And Randy looked after, ameliorating, the, the cause was no eaves troughs. Funnily enough, it's something you, you might not ever think of, you know, so we have the resources as a committee. But if somebody on each committee and, and, you know, they've got access to the pictures, everybody does, everybody on council. You go look at the, um, the website, you can see the picture of Hickling House in, when it's looking good. You drive by and you see three boarded up windows, you go, oh my goodness, you know, and then you start asking questions. But, you know, the heritage committee could certainly take that on and just, and we could just, you know, notice the red flags and alert you or the building department, that, that could be set up, how that happens.
And, and thank you for, for that, Nancy. I think it, it does make sense maybe for the heritage committee to be involved, just given their, um, close relations, existing close relations, so I think that does make a lot of sense. Um, and as we do need to add this to our policies and bylaws and processes, what do you think would be, um, sort of the right cadence for this, the frequency? What do, the, the frequency, do you think, you know, in terms of these drive-bys, like, do you think it would be like every two years? Or what, what do you think would be?
And I think, I think maybe a specific, let's face it, we live in a winter climate. So, you know, a, a look see mid-spring in this climate is a good idea to see if there's been any damage that needs to be addressed. Uh, I mean, I live at Lake Eugenie and every second deck had the railing just knocked off with snow last winter. So, so, you know, maybe, a- and then it, it's just what it is, like for me, is second nature. I just, I know, oh, there's, you know, even if they're listed, and I drive by, I just take, oh, you put an addition on or whatever. And, and it's just an awareness. Um, and if we have that awareness and notice there's something amiss, then we can bring it to the attention of the powers that be. But I think you'll find, I, I sort of agree with, with what Tom, uh, councillor Allwood was saying. People who own heritage buildings want to maintain them. And, and we have to be a little bit careful with the maintenance report, and that was something I did want to bring up. Some of the expenses are not going to necessarily show. It's not necessarily going to be, you know, ten cans of paint to do the woodwork. But because it's maybe old wiring and old heating, and you've got brickwork that's sweating, there might be just some, and, and, and as I said, the cost of insurance, so some of the costs is just, everything costs a bit more because it is a heritage building. And, and that's helping them defray that added expense to maintain it at a, at a proper level.
Go ahead, councillor Dubick.
Thank you, um, and because this is a process, we will need to lock down sort of the, and the heritage committee, um, you know, will at a minimum do, you know, do an inspection or a drive-by, however we want to describe that. You know, is it every year? Is it every two years? What, what do you think would be appropriate? Do you think, um, because it will need to be included in our process every year?
With the mic cut.
Allwood, it's, it, it's, it's every year. Um, and if it needs to be a more intensive inspection with municipal staff, then that can be brought to the attention, otherwise the municipality wouldn't necessarily have to, you know. And as a committee, there's, there's five or six of us, if we get to the point there's twenty buildings, then, you know, in a meeting, we just divide up and say, you're gonna take X, Y, Z, and you're gonna take A, B, C. And, you know, it, it, we're probably talking a couple of hours, uh, total for somebody to do it, depending on how far apart the buildings are.
Okay. Other comments, Mayor McQueen?
So, yeah, so great comments, great discussion. A couple of things, um, yes, I think if, if we entrust our heritage committee to bring recommendations to designate heritage properties, I think we could use them for the, to make sure they meet that qualification. I think that's, that's really important. I think that'd be great, and it helps take some of the load off staff. What Tom, you were saying about open door, I think it's called open doors. I know I've been through the heritage, through Collingwood and had an opportunity to tour some of the old homes. And it's pretty cool that the homeowners allow the general public to go through their home. Like, I mean, that's, that's a big act, that's a big, you know, to, to allow that. But, uh, which it's, it's, you know, and maybe it's the staircase, but you know, still, if it's the home that the staircase is in, it's not just the skirt- staircase, it's the house that, you know, you can tell it's the, still an old house, and that, that's, that's why it's designated. Um, going back to the part about the CIP, but as far as the tax part, once it, it's get designated, impact reassesses it, and then we make the request to the county. Because if the county approves it, we approve it, the county approves it, then the, the education tax portion is also included. So then it's almost automatic, so it's a shift. So if, if we allow, uh, clear, add clarity if I'm wrong in this. So basically, if we say, okay, up to thirty percent of the value can be designated, or can be reflected of the heritage portion, but it's automatic, is it not, through you to the treasurer, like, isn't that the whole? Well, if, if we do, if it's assessed for the heritage part, and then if, if we both have lower tier in county agreeing to it, school, so it's, it's a shift in taxes, is it not? So all of a sudden, it's a shift from the residential, so if it's a thirty percent decrease in their taxes, it's a shift through the, all the other classes, is it not?
Sounded like it was, they were going to pay their taxes on the assessed value, and then they would be given a rebate based on what-
County isn't giving a rebates.
But we, we pay the county, so we would, we pay, do we, we collect obviously the education tax, so we submit to the province.
That's right.
So we just would submit, do we submit the whole amount? And then, Anna, or sorry, Director McCarthy?
Yes, um, it'll be a clawback when we remit to the county and school boards, um, on our levy payment. So they'll budget accordingly, but it shouldn't, um, affect the tax rates other than an addition to their budgets, but it's just a clawback.
The assessed value stays the same, the tax bill stays the same, it's just a rebate given.
So, okay, so that does seem a bit more cumbersome, I, 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 like, you look back to the farm tax rebate program, it's just automatic. It's just a shift, this isn't a shift, so I, I can, it's a little bit more cumbersome, I see, okay.
Uh, councillor Allwood, and then councillor Wickens. Is it on the same topic?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Allen, for you. The, um, my understanding is, you know, the, uh, education part of it is automatic through, so, but, uh, again, it's clawback, but it's automatic. If, because we're two-tier, a lower-tier municipality, if the county does not have that, that's why Own Sound has their, uh, request. They've had a program in place for a number of years, two thousand and nine is my understanding. Um, if, I'm not sure whether this means the county hasn't, so we would be responding, if the county's not paying their portion of it, we would have to pay them. And, and just to speak to, you know, the, the funding line in the CIP is where that's being budgeted. So, you know, part of this program would be, we would identify one, the, the rebate amount, Own Sounds is twenty percent. Um, we would probably also want to, from a budgetary perspective, put a cap on how much we would allow. There's a calculator included in the agenda that shows, you know, per hundred thousand dollars, what the impact might be of a rebate. So, so those are things, but, but the point I wanted to raise, speaking to the mayor's, uh, comments, was, uh, that we would need to get county support for them to, uh, um, effectively give us their twenty percent of the county portion of the taxes we collect and rebate.
But are we just approving the municipal portion? And so if the county doesn't approve it, then we don't issue a re- a, a rebate for that amount? Director McCarthy?
That's correct, we're only responsible for our portion on our municipal taxes and whatever percentage council approves. Um, we did reach out to county staff and, um, to confirm the program is running, and they're, they don't anticipate any problems with it being approved by county council, and, um, they don't see any issues. So, um, I don't see any reason why the county portion wouldn't be approved.
And, and they would likely approve the same percentage that we approve? Okay. All right, thank you. Councillor Wickens?
Thank you, Chair Allen. So, um, Nancy, first of all, I, I apologize for calling you Carol. I was thinking of Carol Matthews here on the radio, but anyways. So, you were talking about Collingwood, and they have, did you say in the hundreds of properties? So, this is hypothetical, but if we were to get a deluge of applicants up to a hundred, or whatever it is, but we may, we may not, okay? But if we were, you, you're a volunteer, and you had to go around to, let's say, a hundred properties a year, that would get onerous on you, would it not?
Um.
Maybe, maybe you would like, I don't know.
Well.
But what happens if we lose people like you, Nancy?
And right now, I've already been in discussions with, um, uh, Mr. French, who owns Hickling House. He's having insurance difficulties, and there, in every municipality, there's an issue with heritage buildings and insurance. Um, CHO is working on that, we've had surveys, it's going to be a topic at next year's conference. Um, but, you know, people are asking to be removed from designated lists. Um, and, you know, my feeling is, I mean, I look around, there's lots of buildings worthy of designation, but there's lots of owners that don't want to deal with it. Um, and I, I'll be interested, and sort of wait, I have been waiting because of the legislation of the listed buildings. I've been waiting for this municipal bylaw to be in as an incentive, so I can write to the owners and say, okay, do you want to be, you, you either have to come off the list, you have to come off the list. Do you want to be designated? Here's what's involved, because yes, there are more restrictions, but here's an incentive, which is, um, the tax incentive. And in some cases, a, a big incentive that people don't understand about being designated is the control over what happens on the property on either side and directly across the street. And that was why the guy who owns the Candy House, uh, beside Beaverbrook School, did have his property designated, because he understood, and I, I spoke to them when they were gonna close Beaverbrook. So you can sell it to become a gas station. Well, why not? Because it's right beside a designated property, and so that's, that can be a bit of an incentive, especially if you're in a village and you're afraid, you know, they want to rip it down and put up a Dollarama beside you. Well, maybe they can't do that because it's going to ruin the ambiance of your heritage building. Um, anyway, I, I, I don't see there being, uh, the huge influx. I, I would just like to suggest that for now, this will work. If it does become fifty buildings and it's too much for the heritage committee, you can trust us to come and say, okay, we need help. If, if you've got fifty designated buildings and you get five hundred more, but you're gonna have more municipal staff anyway, and all of a sudden they can maybe start doing it more than they can right now.
May, perhaps.
Just a quick follow-up, so in Collingwood, is it all done by volunteers, or do they have staff?
Collingwood, and, and there's a big difference, it's one of the reasons I travel around the province. I go and talk to small municipalities, because like us, no heritage planner. The heritage committee are writing the designation reports largely, and, you know, they're edited by staff and amended to, to, to fit whatever, but, you know, we're the ones that take that responsibility. Cities like Collingwood, they've got, they've got a heritage department, and they've got a heritage planner. And they have people that just look after heritage. They've got heritage districts in which twenty-five percent of the buildings must be designated. The other seventy-five percent of the buildings are subject to restrictions. Anything anybody does has to be looked at. So, so they've, they've got a, a lot of, a, a different, they're also a much bigger municipality. Um, but, but this has worked for them for a long time. They've had this tax incentive plan for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, something like that. And they speak very highly of how successful it's been in helping them encourage heritage maintenance and helping owners do what they're, they, they want to do, but can't always afford to do.
I think there's, in my opinion, there's a, a big difference between a city, maybe, maybe Collingwood's a town, but, um, when the designated buildings are in a, in a small area, as opposed to our, a municipality like us, where it could be thirty, forty miles between buildings. It, it doesn't, to me, give us the same benefits as a heritage designated area in a, in a town or a city. Just my thought. I saw two hands.
Just, just one, just one small comment. Uh, when we talk about more staff, that's, that's the biggest beef I get from people. There's too many staff up here, my goodness.
That's why I said perhaps.
Perhaps is right. Anyways, all right.
Councillor Dubick.
Yeah, so, so just to continue on, on that conversation, I, I appreciate the, um, the question and the comment, um, from councillor Wickens, because it is an important one, you know, as we do look into the future. Um, and I think, you know, it's, you know, when we do look at our current state, you know, we are a small municipality. I think the, the inventory is quite small right now, and it's very manageable. You know, um, you know, when we look to Collingwood, Collingwood is a much more built-up, um, larger town. Um, and so they do have the appropriate staff to, to look to that. But I think it's something that, you know, we will, I, I, I think we have to go back to, you know, the core of an intent of this of, do we believe this is important? Um, you know, so I'm of the view, I think this is important, um, you know, to, to move forward with. And then with regards to our current state, I think we have the resources we need right now. And as, you know, as the community continues to grow, um, and if we start to think about maybe potentially, like, um, some heritage in our downtown cores, that's when we would continue to grow as a municipality. Um, and so it will be something in flux, uh, but of course, always something to, to consider right as we grow as a community, but I think we're okay for now.
Okay, Mayor McQueen?
Great discussion, and I'm always been a very strong supporter of heritage buildings, because once they're gone, they're gone. You don't have the enjoyment of them once they're gone. And if there's some incentive to, to encourage people to keep those buildings, I think that's so and so important. Uh, because it is, it, you know, it builds back to our culture, our history, our, you know, where things came from. But there are questions about Collingwood, now Collingwood's been in place, I know they have heritage districts. One example of Collingwood is when they built the new Loblaw store, they were required to do it in brick, not just your commercial building, like, because it was in the district, and you go through Collingwood and it still has that charm. Now, it's a heritage district versus an individual like you're talking about. But I do remember something in the press a couple of years back, where an individual had a heritage home, or bought a, purchased a heritage home, and then they went and painted all the brick. And they got themselves, I'm serious, because you can't have both, they can't have it both ways. And I don't know, Nancy, if you, how that was resolved, but there, there was a pretty big stick that was dealt with that. And, and that, I think that's an example that if you go down this track, and we, and we consider going down this track, okay, then you gotta follow the rules. And I think the accountability for us as a decision-maker here is, yes, if we feel this is important, but there's, there's criteria that they have to follow, because, and, and the reasons why. So I don't know, through you, Mr. Chair, if, if Nancy can speak briefly to that one issue, because I think that's an example of where somebody inadvertently, but didn't know, I'm not sure they bought it. It was new people that bought it, but there is, it's in place, and you've got to follow those rules. So I don't know, if through you, if Nancy can speak to that briefly.
Nancy?
Actually, um, informing owners, um, is one of the issues that, you know, we've discussed in other municipalities. What happened in Collingwood, it was in a heritage district, but it was not designated. The lawyer had told the person that it was in the heritage district and that it did have heritage restrictions, but he didn't really understand what the situation was, and nobody had told him, other than the lawyer saying, oh yeah, by the way, it's registered as being part of the district, nobody explained to him what was involved. Yes, he painted it, he also removed it, it was, it was a, a, a little nineteen, what they call it, craftsman bungalow. You know, like a little square brick box, but it had what's called an eyebrow porch shaped like this. He just took that off, it was one of the designated features. So the way this would work, so you have a designated property. And in the designation, there's a list of what are the attributes- And in the designation, there's a list of what are the attributes that are protected. Normally you protect the massing of the building. You look, you, you protect the location of it on the, on the main street of houses, like on Main Street East in, in Markdale. You know, you want the fact that that's part of six or seven heritage Victorian mansions of early entrepreneurs. You want it to be there as part of that whole streetscape. But on that particular, okay, that's a good building, that the candy factory is beside the May Funeral Home. The corbels, the brickwork, the roof line, all of that is protected. It's noted that the porch was a replacement. So if they need to replace that porch and they, they want to take it back to something that looks more like the original, that's a bonus, not, you know. So th- those kinds of things are, um, are what's in the, in the bylaw. The other thing, the new bylaws and with your, you're speaking to hundreds of people that want the tax break. The new heritage act require, you have to have two of nine criteria met. And three of those criteria, um, and, and do you know what those, I could quickly go through them so that you understand. In terms of design, one criteria is specific, like the whole design of the building. It might be a rare example of an eclectic building. So the actual architectural design and some of the details. It could be desert, another one, another criteria can be specific, really special craftsmanship. In this municipality, our brickwork is extraordinary. Trust me, I've been across the province. Extraordinary tri-color brick. And we have, if you go down downtown Markdale, oh, unbelievable, some of the, if you look up and run yourself into a parking meter, but look up and see, you know, we have brickwork you don't see anywhere else. It's, it's amazing. So, but that, and the other one would be if it was, um, uh, if the design has to do with technological innovation or something, which, you know, we, we, we wouldn't have. So that's, that's design. So, um, and then there's historical, which could be associative value. Who owned it? Who donated the land? Did something interesting happen there? Like was there an election or was there a murder? Or, you know, is that where Agnes McPhail lived, for example? So those associative values, you get a second associative value. Like we have a building in Markdale, the, the former May Funeral Home, that was designed by one of the most prominent Victorian architects of, of the eclectic style ever. So designating that, it would have a separate criteria just for its association with that architect. Um, and never mind his association with Spruill, who, you know, which is another huge one. And then the third one is, um, is a location thing, like is it a landmark? Does it have a strong community significance? Something like a town hall might not have a, it might not be a landmark, but so many things happened there. The one we're designating right now, um, which is in the works, Tommy Hunter gave his very first live performance on the stage at what is the, was the Euphrasia Town Hall, because it was also the community center. Agnes McPhail did speeches there, council meetings for like 85 years. And that, so that is a criteria. But a lot of the buildings, and I'm even looking at some of the ones we have listed, I would have to really squeeze something hard to get to justifiable criteria. You know, they all have either a historic value or a design value, but to have at least two of those criteria. So we're not talking hundreds and hundreds of buildings being eligible under the new, um, heritage bylaw for designation.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Wiggins.
Just another quick question for you, Nancy. What about bank barns? At, at home, we have a, uh, the first barn was built in 23, I think that my wife said. And it is a post and beam design. There was an addition built on it in the 1950s and it is, uh, I believe they call it perline plate. So two different designs in the same building. Now, like Paul said, I'm not, I'm not looking for designation, but would something like that, because those old bank barns are disappearing.
There's all kinds of places that barns are designated. I just, the, this year's conference was in Prince Edward County and one whole morning tour. We went out to a barn they'd rebuilt and what they're discovering, like the barn had fallen down and there's this big pile of wood. A huge amount of it was reusable because it was first growth timber. You know, and it was interesting, you look in it and they had people come and craft new barns. But what they have done, and they had a whole show, they've taken all these barns and refitted them to be art galleries, to be cideries, to be, uh, you know, a, a, a winery or whatever. And so, yeah, a building like that could be designated. Um, and it could be like if your whole farm, for example, is a heritage farm in your farmhouse, the barn could be one of the buildings on the property or just the barn could be designated as being of interest, but then you'd have to maintain the old wooden barn, which isn't necessarily, judging by how many of them are falling down, I, I don't think it's an easy task, right Mayor McQueen?
Yeah, three of them.
Okay. So Counselor Dubick, you turn your mic off.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so, so, um, so I think that, that was a very good conversation. So thank you. I'm wondering if we can now maybe focus in on the, um, the actual financial implications.
Exactly what I was going to say. Out of the three things, first was annual monitoring. So we've got a heritage committee. We've also got perhaps five years or a change of ownership, building permit application. And then number three was how to assess the value and that's impact. So I think we've covered those two areas. So number two was the, the financial part of how much relief do we give? So.
And maybe as, as part of that, just to kick it off, um, I was wondering if our Director of Finance could just take us through the calculator so that we understand sort of the numbers first and then we can kind of talk about sort of the, exactly, yes, um, the kind of the percentages and we can talk about caps, et cetera. But I think the basis would be very good.
Counselor Oliver.
Thank you. I think it's good to move on to the next point. Before we do though, I just wanted to be clear on what happens when a property changes ownership? Does the heritage designation, is it registered on title and moves with the property? Because, you know, a new owner may not have the same commitment to, uh, the heritage.
A designation is registered on title. So the registration goes over. Collingwood actually, after the incident that, that Mayor McQueen brought up, Collingwood, uh, did try and put something more in common. We probably need a little bit better. I kind of do it casually right now because we have so few buildings. If I see a heritage buildings for sale, I'll call the Realtor. I say, make sure the owner knows, have, and we, we'll go and talk to the new owner. But we're small and we don't have that many, that many buildings that, that are of concern. But it is registered on title. Um, the municipality should have a, you know, hello, welcome to Gray Highlands. Your building is designated and there's a, here's a few things. I mean, maybe whether it's a panther. Is, there could be stuff and, and we, we're working on it actually. They're doing a great job on the, the website, Amanda's really, and Danielle have been really helping me make sure things like that are on the website. So there's information for owners. And in there they can click to get a heritage permit, that kind of stuff. So. But we could be more forward thinking when properties change hands, which the Clerks Department would know. And there is a red flag for the Building Department now. If somebody wants to do, needs a permit for a heritage building, it comes to us and to you. And it would be a good thing. It's a red flag if a heritage building sells. Okay. Somebody needs to make an approach, you know, I, whether it's the Heritage Committee or the municipality. In a lot of municipalities, they share that responsibility. You know, you ask, can, can you do it? No, I'm too busy. Okay. We'll send somebody, but whatever. It's, it's teamwork.
Okay. Thank you. Just, just a minute. I see Director MacArthur has raised her hand. So if we could move the director over. I believe, just a minute. Oh, no. I heard a little noise on this other computer and there was a hand beside it, but actually it was the cursor of the other computer. So ignore that. Okay. Turn your mic on.
Just before we get into the third one. So if a property is going for sale and it's going to be changed hands, I don't know, all lawyers, but probably most lawyers should get a compliance report that they go through the municipality. You get a task, you can get a tax certificate, I understand as well, but a compliance report would be something that would go to the file that would say all about the property, selling and all that kind of stuff. If that was happening, then the property file would also tell that lawyer who was doing it that it's registered because it's a heritage property. Just, just so then if it's changing hands, there's, there's a criteria that pops up that, okay, you know, Mr. Jones, you're buying this, it is a heritage property. So they know. Well, I guess if they don't do a compliance report, I guess it's, you know, I don't know if all lawyers do that. I don't know. It's a good thing because it, it gives you the red flags of everything about that property.
But if, if it's on title, they should be made aware.
Yeah, they should be. I mean, they really should be. The other question I have just briefly, if, if a, if a new owner buys a property that has a heritage designation, but they want to remove that designation, what's the process there?
There is a long process. Do, do we need to know that right now?
I just, if it's briefly, but, but if there's a process, all I'm saying is, is in the sense that then that disqualifies them for all the stuff that we're working on today, right? And I think it's important if we could just get like a very brief part of that process, only from the fact is because we don't want to handcuff people to the point that, you know, maybe it, it affects the sale and stuff like that too, right? So.
Paint, paint the bricks. That'll get you out of it. It was very briefly, Nancy.
It could be very brief. It is a process and they would have to apply to council. The Heritage Committee come in and you have every right to say, no, we're not going to allow it. They have to come up with good reasons. They can't do it just, I don't want to live in a designated property. That's not an excuse. I can't afford the insurance or I can't get any insurance. Maybe that's an excuse. I don't know. But, but they have to have a good reason and we all, you all and the Heritage Committee all have to accept that their reason is valid.
Okay. Thank you. So item number two, the, well, two on my list, the percentage or how much relief? Do we want to get into that now? Do we want to take a quick break or maybe take a 10-minute break? And then we'll move on to this other topic. So, um, let, let's take a 12-minute break. So we'll come back at 10:15. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
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 Thank you. Um, so item number two, the well, two on my list, the percentage or how much relief? Do we want to get into that now? Do we want to take a quick break or? Maybe take a 10 minute break and then we'll move on to this other topic.
Yeah, as we get old, sometimes you gotta watch.
So um, let's let's take a 12 minute break. So we'll come back at 10:15. Thank you.
Through you. Uh, so the calculator is included on the agenda called the Heritage Rebate Calculator. Uh, and it's up on the screen there. Um, and just for ease of uh, calculating and showing the impact, um, I set it at 10%. Um, per the guide, it can be anywhere between 10 and 40%. Uh, and then um, I set it at $100,000 of assessed um, value uh, of the heritage feature for residential, commercial and farm tax classes. Um, so you can see the total um, taxes that would be charged on that value of assessment. Uh, so for residential, uh, the total taxes are $1,413. And at the 10% rebate, um, the rebate to the owner is $141, of which $84 is the cost to Gray Highlands. So I won't go through every sample there, but um, I can certainly update if you wanted to see different numbers, percentages or assessed values.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so just a question around the assessed value of heritage feature. Because I think that's important um, kind of component to kind of keep that in mind. So when we go back to the MPAC, um, and when we talk, say, about a um, a heritage staircase within a house. If that's the only heritage kind of feature, what would get assessed from the property? For for that? Is it like the house? Is it the maybe if you can just provide some context there? Thank you.
Uh, through you, I'll admit, I think this is going to be a learning journey for me. The information does come from MPAC, um, according to their um, property assessors. Um, so I assume it will be limited to the the value of the staircase itself, not the whole building, but um, I'm finding that it is hard to predict, I think, of what the assessed values will look like.
Okay, Mayor McQueen?
So I'm I'm thinking of a property that's down the Pretty River Valley. I'm trying to think of the name of it because it was a heritage long time, even I think it was one of the original heritage properties. And I can't think because there it was a, there used to be a a flower mill or something. Nancy, help me out here. It's way down the Pretty River Valley, past the Billy Reid Road. Down in the Pretty River Valley. Oh, it'll come to anyway, you think about it. But I think the qualifier there is because of the staircase. But the house is is an old home, like it's 18 Sykes. Sykes, but the qualifier that is still part of that old building is the staircase is still in that house that, you know, okay, this this is a heritage. And I mean, the roof peaks or drip, you know, you can tell it's the old house. So I thought it's not just the staircase, but the staircase is a prominent part of that heritage building, but the whole building is a heritage building. It was built in the 18 whatever. But obviously, if if they went in and completely gutted it and redid it and made it modern, you're not really preserving a heritage. Like it's it may be, but nobody would ever know that. But the staircase does qualify. It's the biggest qualifier for that particular Sykes home is because of that feature, but the whole house is a heritage home.
So, sorry, go ahead.
Sure that um, every scenario will be a little bit different and I do assume that MPAC will be going to visit the houses as well to gather all the information.
But just to follow up, I know when it was designated, that was one of the checkboxes that, you know. Obviously, windows have to be replaced if their glass is falling in it, and I know there's, but you can have new windows look like old windows, too. But I know, anyway, I I just know that one particular property was the staircase that made that the main feature, but it's the whole home that, anyway.
Clear from Allstein?
Through you, Chair Allen. In that specific example, like the entire house ha- um, has been designated, but not the entire property because there's another house on the property. So the entire building that is heritage designated would be what's evaluated, not just based on the staircase. And I think that's the case in, I believe, all of our designations is that it's buildings, not necessarily entire properties, but entire buildings, because there's usually there's usually just not one random historic feature in a building. There's usually multiple historic features that go together.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Mister Chair, I think at some time when MPAC does come and visit us and they do, that would be a good time for them to talk about that further to us as well, just as an FYI.
Nancy? Just.
If our the farm property that we designated a couple of years ago on on Gray Road 13 north of Kimberley. And maybe what somebody on staff could approach MPAC and ask them to do, tell you how they would rate that because the entire property and it's 120 acres or something, right down to the Beaver River. The property, the farm, the old apple trees, the barn site, that's all designated. The old farmhouse, which is three bedrooms and kind of a bit ramshackle rambling, um, that's all designated. But there is a 4,000 square foot modern building on six acres up at the top that's not designated. That would be a perfect example of you getting a split from MPAC because I'm sure that property is worth a lot of money with that big fancy house. But the big fancy house would not be subject to your rebate and, you know, get them to give you an answer on that one and you'll have a really good handle on on what you want to do.
And.
So we still need to come up with a either a percentage or a percentage and a maximum. So does somebody want to uh, make a suggestion so that others can comment? Counselor Dubic?
Um, sure. I I think it's good to start with an uh, maybe with a proposal and then we can um, kind of take it from there. Um, we have been uh, speaking to 20%. Um, you know, as the, you know, as the percentage. So so I'll put that out there. So 20% say with a cap of $1,000.
That's quite a cap.
So but it's out there to to put some, um, I think some, some, you you got to start somewhere, right? And so I think that's a a good starting point. So I'll put it out there.
So Treasurer, or Director McCarthy, this um, calculator that you gave us, the example, the residential, our rebate would be $84. Assessed value of heritage feature, 100,000. So to get to a maximum of 1,000, and are you Counselor Dubic talking 1,000 locally or 1,000 total?
Um, I was thinking 1,000 total.
1,000 total.
Yeah.
So that $84 would, the assessed value would have to be near a million dollars. Which would then make it a $840. Is that my thinking properly?
Through you. Uh, so if the rebate was 20% uh, and the cap for the total rebate was $1,000 and that's an assessed residential value of around 350,000.
Yeah, I was going by the 10%, but okay, all right. Okay. Comments? Counselor Alwood?
Thank you, Chair Allen. Through you, I, you know, I think the cap needs to talk to the total amount of not just the individual limit per property, but the total amount in the program. So I I think we need to consider that also. Because, you know, if the budget line stays in the CIP, we're going to have you know, $20,000 in uh, or $10,000 or whatever uh, council decides is the appropriate number, but we we need to determine that to uh, have a uh, an appropriate amount reserved in our budget uh, to cover the program. So not just the $1,000 per per property, but the total amount of 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 the program, right?
On a annual basis, yeah, okay. Clear from Allstein?
Through you, Chair Allen. Um, the CIP cap is decided at the budget time and is not decided through this bylaw. So this bylaw only comes into effect if council each year puts money towards the CIP budget. If council decides to cut that budget, this program is null and void in that year. So the people can only apply if council budgets into the CIP program every year.
And if we only put in, if we put in 20,000, then there's that much available? If we put in 10,000, there's that much available? And is it going to be first come, first served? Okay, all right. Go ahead, clear from Allstein?
Through you, Chair Allen. It'll be first come, first served for heritage and CIP applications. So that's, there's not a specific amount assigned one way or the other. It's all considered CIP under the CIP program.
Right, okay. Counselor Dubic?
Is 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 so I think that's interesting. I'm just wondering if if then maybe there should be a separate line because it's easier to kind of manage in terms of just the heritage tax piece. So could it could it still be like within the CIP, but like, you know, like two lines? Like, is is that possible? So I'm just throwing that out, but it's, I I think it's just easier to have clear line of sight in terms of the management of the program itself.
And also for somebody that agrees to designate their house or their property, I think they would want to know that this is going to be available to them on an ongoing basis, not at the will of whoever's sitting around this table. Okay. Director McCarthy?
It um, it could be two separate um, budget line items. Um, but ultimately, um, the other CIP line item is very difficult to uh, budget for as well because it's all just dependent on applications. And I feel like for this program, we're going to learn a lot in the coming year as to what um, the financial impact will be. So every application will still come before council, so we'll also get a sense at that time um, as to what the financial impact will be, but um, perhaps it might be something we want to consider, you know, in a year's time when we've had a full cycle of applications to process.
Mayor McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Is this how, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this how On Sound does it? They rebate the property? I thought it's a shift in the taxes. Does On Sound rebate these properties back? She seems so cumbersome. Like, I thought, like, you know, how you have the the, like I said earlier, like the farm, it's like a separate, a shift. It's automatic until you lose that designation or you change it. It's not like so cumbersome of the staff because this seems so like I, am I wrong by saying, is that the way it's across? We we have to physically give them a check?
Director.
Alternatively, sorry, we could um, credit their tax account instead of doing a check, but ultimately, there's no change in the tax liability. Um, and the assessment, so it's it's still spread out across the whole municipality.
Like a, yeah, okay. It just, it's hard. I think it'd be hard through the budget cycle. If they were, you know, I'm not sure, like, we'd almost need to know that early to get into the following year. It almost like you did, it almost needs to come in October as a separate report to council, say, are you approving this for the next year? Because when I in December 4th or 8th, that's when the rule number assessment is sort of set, right, from MPAC? It almost have to be around that time to be determined. So then it's not like they're not waiting. I don't know. It just, it just seems so cumbersome. I don't know. You want to try to streamline it, but I don't know. I'll leave it at that. I just.
Counselor Alwood?
Uh, thank you, Chair Allen, through you on the same subject. I mean, the I think there has to be some certainty for the heritage property owner that's going to to uh, go through this process and uh, maintain their heritage properties, that that tax rebate's not going to be at the whim of up another term of council that could say, hey, we're we're going to do away with the CIP program or do away with this program. I mean, you've got heritage designation registered on title that's hard to remove. Uh, I'm uh, I I wonder how we deal with that?
Well, it is at the discretion of each council. In December of 26, the next council could say, no, we're not doing this. So there is no guarantees. Other comments, questions? Director McCarthy?
Reminder, so there is currently, I believe, around 20,000 um, in the budget for the CIP reserve, which includes the CIP application. So I do feel that would probably be sufficient to get us through 2026. And then perhaps in 2027, that's when we would need to amend the budget um, accordingly to account for the number of applications and actual cost to Gray Highlands.
I wonder if there's been a a big uptake on this in other municipalities, other city of On Sound and whether they see a a large increase. Clear from Allstein?
Um, thank you, Chair Allen. So one of the things. Thank you, Chair Allen. So one of the things that is kind of confusing in here is that applications would have to be received by June thirtieth for the tax year prior. So, you know, you're gonna say in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, they would have applied for twenty twenty-four tax rebate. So you will know the amounts at that time, but yes, it does make it difficult for budgeting.
Counselor Alwood?
Right, thank you, Chair Allen. The On Sound, the amount of taxes for the city purposes rebated in the twenty twenty-four tax year under the program is twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and ten cents for sixteen eligible heritage properties. And I think the county contribution of that was five thousand six hundred and seventy-seven forty-eight, so.
Wow, that's over a thousand dollars per, I wonder what rate do they?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. Just have higher taxes than Gray Highlands. Mayor McQueen?
So I think, I think one other thing I think we should keep in mind, and maybe Nancy, you could speak to this a little bit more, is, and you did raise it a little earlier on today's discussion, is we have a number of listed properties that aren't heritage designated. At some point, they're gonna drop off. And I think that's something that I think we all, as council, need to put in our mind is those listings may consider designation, because there's a little incentive. But because the province has changed now, that those listings eventually, if they don't change it, will drop off. And I don't, you mentioned Chair Nancy, let's speak to that at all.
Nancy?
I hope you heard me.
Yeah, I, I heard most, I think you wanted to know what would happen to the listed properties. They can only be listed for two years. The deadline is the twenty, twenty twenty-six, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, for the ones that were listed at the beginning. And what we have to do between now and then, those properties either need to be, and they don't have to be fully designated. We may be going through the heritage, you, you may be getting things from the Heritage Committee that say you will declare the intention to designate, you know, especially if it's five properties and, and then you'll wait until you get the actual paperwork to pass the actual bylaw. But declaring the intention to designate is sufficient to keep those buildings on the listing, and then they get moved to the designated. What we have agreed and council has approved, the buildings that choose to not be designated with their permission, we will change the, the listing category will still be there because somebody comes and says, oh, I want to designate my property. We list it immediately while we're designating it, which adds recognition and, and protection for it in that process. And we've got two years to get it designated. But then we're gonna create, oh, I can't remember what we called it. Or a heritage inventory, and that will just be buildings. And we will add buildings that have never been listed or designated but are of huge interest, like the one that was the May Funeral Home and like the big, you know, the church, some of the churches, that kind of stuff. We can put them there. So people looking in the, and people do. They check the Heritage website when they're going to visit a strange town. What is there to see? What do I want to know? So we can build that. Right now, I think we have, my last count was there are eleven listed. We have twenty-one listed properties, but ten of them are either cemeteries or town-owned buildings and, or churches. And none of those pay taxes, so they're not gonna care about it, you know, designating them as neither here nor there. The private homes of the eleven or so, I was looking at them and I think probably only about six of them, I could make a good case to actually designate them under the new, you know, because some of, four or five of them have had so much renovation and stuff that they don't quite meet enough criteria to be, you know, to be designated under the new bylaws. So that's the situation. But having said that, once this comes in, as a Heritage Committee, we're gonna probably start knocking on doors like the former May Funeral Home. That, that building's incredible. I mean, it, it's one of the most incredible buildings in the whole province, never mind this town. And, you know, it, it, are you ready for this? Of the nine criteria, it meets seven. That, you know, anyway, so we will probably start knocking on doors and hope that they will want to be designated. But there's not, what are there? Four or five of those buildings? Not, not a hundred.
Counselor Alwood?
Nancy just mentioned the May Funeral Hall. I mean, the, there's actually a feature film being shot in the, in that building in October. A horror feature film, because, you know, obviously it's a very unique piece of property. And not only are they shooting the film in that building, but they're renting the Anglia Church for the catering purposes for the crews and all that. So, I mean, again, it draws, it's a heritage feature that draws economic activity to your community.
So we've got suggested twenty percent and a cap of a thousand. What do people think about that? New person here to talk. Counselor Lowhead?
Thank you, Chair Allen. I'm, I'm prepared to, to second that twenty percent and, and thousand dollar cap. I think that that seems reasonable. It's, I'd be curious to see. I mean, we, we don't know what the, what the uptake of this is going to be. I mean, there may be a flood of, of heritage owners in Gray Highlands. They come knocking and it may trickle in. But to me, it feels like a reasonable place to start. It's, it's generous without being over the top. And again, I'm, I'm prepared. I think we're still looking for a second or for that motion or not.
So was that a motion previously or just a comment to get the discussion going?
That will be a motion.
Okay. Well, let the clerk and Counselor Lowhead is seconding that, twenty percent with a cap of a thousand dollars per property. Okay, Counselor Dubic?
Thank you. And, and, and just, you know, speaking with some heritage owners, you know, just a bit of a reminder of, you know, whatever amount they may get, if it's four hundred, six hundred dollars, it's still a very small percentage. Like, if they're actually upkeeping their heritage features, that's actually still a very small percentage towards those costs of actually keeping it maintained and restored, you know, if it's paints or, you know, whatever else it may be.
Counselor Alwood?
I, I just want to throw in, the thousand dollars is the total, not just the municipal portion. It's a county education and...
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's, just from a finance perspective, I figure it's probably easier to manage it, maybe like, you know, at a total level. I'm not sure, but yeah, but I'll keep it as a total. If you feel that's, so Counselor Alwood, if you feel that's a little maybe too low, if we're thinking about a total, that's, you know, or too high, whatever that is. But yeah, but let's, let's, let's maybe keep it at a total level. And then we can adjust accordingly if you have a different motion.
Counselor Alwood?
Maybe our treasurer could just confirm what the total appraised value based on twenty percent and a thousand dollars. You know, how much of, how much that might be?
Director McCarthy?
Through you. So on a residential property, the assessed value is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total, total rebate of almost a thousand dollars.
There was also in the options that were listed in the report to council about at least a one point zero ratio. So the farms don't have that, yet they're included in your calculator. What are your, what's your thinking there? Director McCarthy, please?
That was simply just something to consider. In the guide, there was also reference to the fact of considering implementing a lower threshold too. So if it's less than a hundred dollar rebate, then maybe they don't qualify or we don't provide the rebate just based on all the administrative work for such a low value. That was the only thinking behind considering of the ratio.
Okay, thank you. Mayor McQueen?
Well, if you took, if you took that example and assessed value, so if there was a barn or the farmhouse, I guess the thing is, the farmhouse is assessed at one acre and it's on a hundred percent of a farm. So, you know, so it's at one percent, at that hundred percent, which still could apply. But I look at the numbers here, so if it was, I'm trying to think, you know, so maybe if it was a farm that was assessed at two thousand sixteen value, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, the house may be assessed at a hundred and fifty, the land, so the remainder is farm. But how much is that farm, the barn versus the land? Like, I don't, is, is that broken down? Like, because it's just, it's just, it's just to take the house away from it. It's that one, it's, you know, the house and one acre is assessed at a hundred, a hundred percent. And then the rest is twenty-five, but it doesn't get into the details of the barn, I don't think, does it? Through you, Mr. Chair?
Through MPAC does value, they assign a certain value for the farmland itself per acre, and then they value the building differently.
So the carrying on, Mr. Chair, so if the barn's valued at two hundred thousand. Looking at this, at, at the assessed value, but that's, I'm confused because if the barn's only assessed at two hundred thousand, but it's at twenty-five percent of that two hundred thousand, how does it fall into the hundred thousand? Are we talking like five bucks? Like, I don't know. Can you, can you help me out here? Like, so you went for assessed value on farm, so that's at the twenty-five percent. So would it be fair to say if the barn was assessed at two hundred thousand, through the cost here, that would be sixty-two dollars?
Director McCarthy?
Yes, that's correct. So with a rebate at twenty percent, farm value at two hundred thousand dollars, the total rebate is a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So I guess the thing is, would it be worth it for a hundred and twenty-five or would you even bother? I think, I think you leave it just to keep it simple, but I, I hardly doubt that. I guess it'd be a process, but I, unless, if, and, and I'm just, that's a question that we'd have to ask MPAC. How do they break that down in the buildings? But if it is broken down in the buildings, but I guess it's a small. But I would say the uptake on that, I, I think for a hundred and twenty dollars, would, would you bother? I don't know. I don't know.
Especially when it restricts what you can do with that.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, like I, yeah.
Clerk Van Alstine?
Thank you. In the guide, it gives an example of, that's pretty much that specific example. And it says the farmhouse and the barn and lands associated with those two would be eligible for the tax rebate. But the remainder of the property, say the other, you know, ninety-five acres or whatever, would not be.
But that house is, it falls into that hundred percent, right? Which is no different than anybody else's house, right? Unless there was a stone malchouse or something else, or it could be the cluster. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm okay of leaving it the way it is because... If it does make the barn, I think just because they feel it's important, they would do that, right?
Director McCarthy?
Note that if you were looking to specifically target barns or farm features, then you could set a higher percentage for that type of property as well.
You, Mr. Chair, that would be the part of wanting, that, that could come at a different point, part, because if, if the old barns are, are disappearing on the landscape like big time, and all of a sudden there's three left, you may want, maybe we should incentivize those three that are left, right? And I think that could, that could come at a later date too, right? Or even conversations through the Heritage Committee, recommendation could come all through there and stuff like that, so.
Nancy, just wait, wait till you get the mic.
Only reason, the designation specifies, and if it's a hundred acre property, and we've got two of those now on file, specific things are listed and, and things are excluded. And even in town, an example in town, the little art gallery that was the church that was the yoga center, it is designated, but there's a shed, a driver's shed, that is exempted from any designation, mostly for permit things, but that whole property would just be, whatever that property is assessed at, they would get a tax rebate on their total amount of tax, whatever, whatever you're saying. But, but, you know, you don't need to nitpick about barns and outbuildings and stuff like that, because those would be covered in the designation of that property or exempted in the designation.
Right?
So my suggestion is just leave it. It just makes it simpler at them.
So twenty percent cap of a thousand dollars total tax, not just Gray Highlands portion, okay?
And one, and the one hundred, the rest?
Put your mic.
Thank you, Chair Allen. And the, when you say just leave it, leave it at the residential rate, not the, the one? I forget how the treasurer designated that, but it's only for basically residential and commercial properties that are higher than the one?
No, all tax, all tax classes.
All tax classes, so.
Yeah. Counselor Lowhead?
Thanks, Chair Allen. So just from my clarity here, again, what's gonna be the mechanism of reporting on this annually? Is it, I mean, this is gonna come back to us at budget time, but is that gonna be the only form of report for this? And when we see it, I mean, how will it be laid out? Will we get to see the number of applications, the total amount applied, et cetera?
Go on a moment. We'll get, we'll get minutes from the Heritage Committee, so we'll know, we'll see if there's more properties being designated, but Clerk Van Alstine?
Through you, Chair Allen. Essentially, the applications will be approved by council before the, any rebate is applied. So that will be council's first trigger. And I believe any other reporting would be done through the budget. So I, I don't imagine there would be an annual report that would come to council unless staff were directed to do so.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Allen. Yeah, so, I guess that makes sense. And then again, at the, at budget time, there will be sort of, we will see a, a total sum, an annual total sum that will effectively operate as a report sorts.
Mayor McQueen?
So I'm thinking, as, as our treasurer said, that there's a reserve. In my mind, I think through a budget process, is keeping so much into the reserve that can qualify for that. So then, as the clerk said, you can apply up to June of the following year. It still has to get stamped here, but you're not going back. And so, so I think each budget cycle, you're gonna look at, okay, we had this uptake. We need to up the reserve, or it's okay, it's on and up, big uptake. And I think that way it simplifies it. So then it's got the direction of council that we're supporting this program. We still have to approve each property as it comes forward, but we know there's a reserve set aside. And there may be very little uptake, or there may be a whole lot. But I think each that cycle, we could determine how we maintain that reserve. I think that would make it easier, just as you said, Madam Treasurer, that, you know, and, and I think that gets us a little bit of a buffer zone there as well, and it's there. And, you know, whether the program gets canceled or whatever, it's, it's still there. But I think that, I think that would be more of an easier process, in my mind.
Have a comment, Director McCarthy?
Through you. I was just gonna add that I like the CIP program. Every time that staff notices something about the initial program that they think a change should be made, it comes before, before council. So I get the sense that this will be similar as well. We'll realize in a year that we need to maybe massage certain aspects of it, and that would be the appropriate time to report to council as well.
Counselor Dubic?
Yeah, thank you. And, and I think like, you know, after a year, like sort of a first year cycle, I think it would be helpful for, you know, council to, you know, just to review it again, because this is a little bit of the, we'll get a bunch of learnings, I think, in that first year. So that if something does need to get massaged, you know, we do have the opportunity to do so. So thank you. um, you know, we do have the opportunity to do so, so thank you.
Mayor McQueen.
So could that be an amendment to your motion? That, that's included, that after the year cycle, there is a review. Do we need to have that in there, or would that be something that, I think sometimes you need to set direction if you want to come back. So I just, I, I sort of throw that out for conversation.
I think at budget time, that's our opportunity to either move it forward or slow it down or cancel all the other.
Remember, budget, you're, you're inundated with a whole lot of stuff, so that review may come outside that budget cycle. We have more time to think about, that's all, but I don't know.
Clerk Van Alstine.
Through you, Chair Allen. As always, council can provide any direction that they wish. Um, I don't feel that that would be necessary because a review may not be necessary. You know, in a year's time, everything might be working very smoothly, and we'd still have to come back with a report regardless. Um, so I think, as always, council can provide a notice of motion if they want to review something, staff can bring it forward if something's not working and, you know, needs council's input. Um, so that's my opinion on it, but as always, council can direct however they wish.
Counselor Dubic.
So, so I think we have enough, like, um, touch points, especially at the budget time, right? In a budget time, we should be receiving any um, supporting data i- in support of that program, um, so that we can have that proper conversation. So, so I feel comfortable that we have existing, uh, an existing process that helps, um, to instill that, you know, we will have that review opportunity. That's, that's just my perspective.
Okay, so there's been no opposition to twenty percent and a thousand dollar cap. So I think I'm going to call the question. Not seeing any opposition to that, so all those, uh, let's, can we read the motion out, please, Clerk Van Alstine?
That council directs staff to amend the draft heritage bylaw to include a twenty percent rebate with an annual cap of a thousand dollars, including local school board and county taxes.
Great. Mayor McQueen.
So the breakdown on a thousand dollar cap would be something like four fifty for the municipality of Gray Highlands, three hundred for Gray County, and the remaining would be schools. Is that, how would that thousand be broken down in, in a, in a rough, rough number?
Director McCarthy has got that.
Uh, the rough breakdown is, uh, five hundred and ninety Gray Highlands, three hundred county and a hundred and ten education.
That would take quite an assessed value to to, yeah. Okay. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Opposed? That is carried a vote of five to one. Okay, and the next motion is that the committee adjourn until the call. Oh, Clerk Van Alstine, if there's something else we need to do.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair Allen. I didn't think we had provided enough direction, um, yet. So you've established what you want the tax rebate amount to be, but there were other questions in the bylaw that still need answering.
Oh.
Um, one of them was definitely discussed already today, but there was no formal motion moved on it, and it was about the inspection process.
Okay.
So I have drafted what I think maybe council was leaning towards, but which I can read out if you would like.
Read that out for us, please.
That council directs staff to amend the draft heritage tax rebate bylaw by changing the inspection requirements to be an informal inspection annually through the Heritage Gray Highlands Committee, and that a formal inspection would be required when ownership changes occur, building permits are pulled, or every five years.
Who would like to move that? Counselor Allwood is moving that? Seconder? Counselor Dubic, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried also on a vote five to one. Anything else, Clerk Van Alstine?
Yes, one more thing. Um, in my staff report, I had requested whether or not council wanted to provide a twenty twenty-five date. The dates work well for calendar years, um, so people could apply for twenty twenty-five rebate up to June of twenty twenty-six, but nobody at this point could apply for a twenty twenty-four rebate, and we did have, um, correspondence requesting that. So it's completely at council's discretion what they want to do. You know, obviously that budget is kind of long in the over with, uh, but it's, I just wanted to make sure council had considered that option and made a decision either way.
So you're saying there's retroactive?
Whether or not council wants to provide a retroactive date for twenty twenty-four's tax year.
Mayor McQueen.
Mr. Chair, so under Impax policy, whether it's a farm tax or different things, where do they fall in a calendar year that you can apply to for a previous year? And that's through you to the treasurer, because I know there is a date that if you miss it.
This process, um, staff will submit it to them electronically, and then they provide the value back within thirty days. So it doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the time of year.
Okay, maybe just re, 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 reframe the question. So if you miss or somehow get reevaluated on the farm tax program, and you get so far down that calendar, next following year, there's, there's a certain time in the year that you can retroback. And I don't know if that's Impax rules. That's what I was trying to say, is, does, if Impact has a certain rule that you can go back to previous year, I just wonder what that date is, and does it make sense to mirror with it? Because then it's, it's more, oh yeah, that's the same as that sort of thing. And, and I don't, it, there, is there, or, or you can go back one year, is there? Do you?
Uh, yes, there is a deadline, but that's per the Assessment Act, um, and it doesn't, wouldn't really apply, apply for this kind of a rebate. So Empac will just be providing us with the assessed value that fits within, um, the criteria.
But if you have missed the farm tax program rebate, you only have so much in the following year to go back. I thought that was like October or end of August, or, or I thought there was a, a date for that. That's the, that's the key thing I'm.
Okay, yeah, that's, uh, end of February to file an appeal.
No, no, not the appeal. It, it's just, it, and I know this happened last year where all properties were bumped up, they lost their, their farm tax. And they, but you have so much for, so much, there's a certain date in the, in the next year that you can go back to the previous year that you can apply. Once you get past that date, you've missed the opportunity to qualify. You can get the next year, but to go back, that's the date. I'm, I, I thought there was a date that that you can only have so much time in the pre, or the next year to, to be able to apply for the previous year.
Right?
Only February? I, I thought it was.
Was my understanding. Again, all the, uh, the, all the data go is processed through Agrocorp and then to Empac and then to the municipality. Um, so to file an appeal through the municipality, it's at the end of February.
Well, I've had conversations with, what's his name?
Doesn't, doesn't.
Okay, well, I, 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 okay, I'll leave it for now. I just know that if you missed that date, you, I thought you had till August or October. I, I thought there was a date, anyway.
Counselor Dubic.
Uh, thank you. So there has been questions, uh, by some residents about, you know, can this be applied retroactively, given, you know, the fact that, you know, we've been talking about this for, uh, for some time. Um, can I just get a, uh, maybe just a response from our Director of Finance, um? You know, with, so, you know, kind of looking forward, you know, as, as we, um, you know, uh, approve the bylaws, et cetera, this would be applicable to twenty twenty-five, you know, if, if we set a date sometime in twenty twenty-six. In terms of going, say, a year back to twenty twenty-four, our, um, from a municipal perspective, our budget has been um, audited and it's been, um, sort of passed, et cetera. If we did do something retroactively, say like twenty twenty-four, what, what would that actually mean in terms of, you know, process or steps we would need to take from a municipal perspective?
Director McCarthy.
Through you, um, the only impact is that it would be to increase the expense line in twenty twenty-five. Um, and it would, um, be funded from the reserve, the CIP reserve. Um, so essentially, I think we could just expect probably that we would be seeing double the volume, um, if we're processing two years at once.
Is there any other?
Good point from Clerk Van Alstine. I can't comment on county and school board. That would need to be approved.
Is there any precedence in retroactively doing something that there's no bylaw in place now? Clerk Van Alstine.
Through you, Chair Allen. Um, I don't have any precedents noted. Um, it was just a request that came in from an individual heritage property owner, and I just didn't want it to get lost in council's, uh, considerations. That's the only reason I brought it forward. Um, as it stands right now, this bylaw will not be back in front of council for passing, I would say, until probably the second meeting in October, because we have to have the first meeting for council to approve the committee's recommendations. Um, so at that point, it, it would, I would essentially say we could start fresh in twenty twenty-six, but that's completely up to council.
Okay. Counselor Wickens.
Thank you, uh, Chair Allen. Uh, as you can see how I voted previously, I'm not in favor of this. I, I can see this snowballing and definitely against any, uh, going back a year or two or anything like that. I, anyways, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Mayor McQueen.
Well, February is the, other alignments, then you have up to first or end of February, Madam Treasurer.
That would be for twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Well, whatever.
They're talking twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, but it's passed.
It's passed.
Passed. But I'm saying, if you want to set something that.
Well, it's June, the end of June is, is the time.
Yeah, but I'm saying maybe we, maybe it's like the other alignment, it's the end of February.
But it's in the act, isn't it? Um, Clerk Van Alstine, isn't it in the act that you have um, told the end of June to apply for the previous year?
That's part of the draft bylaw, not the act.
Okay.
So our draft bylaw says up to June thirtieth, so June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, you could apply for your rebate for twenty twenty-five.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I was saying is, if, if there's some concern about that, then make it align with the others to the end of February, if there's other alignments that you can go back.
But the end of June is already passed anyways.
No, I know. No, clerk was talking about twenty twenty-five.
No, the request is to go back to twenty twenty-four.
Did you not just say for the twenty twenty-five year, you have up to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six? I thought you just said that.
She was just, the clerk was just telling us what's in the bylaw, but the request from a heritage property owner is to get a rebate for twenty twenty-four.
We'll pass that one.
We'll pass. I think, I think.
I'm just saying is, if somebody realized at the end, oh gosh, I didn't do this, maybe they have to the end of February, that's all.
No, well.
It's suggested, she, the, the bylaw says June, I'm just saying, well, maybe that doesn't work for, maybe the end of February works better, I don't know. I'm just, I, I'm throwing it out there for discussion purposes to be aligned with other parts of what the clerk, what the treasurer was talking about.
Okay. All right, so there's no motion to approve a retroactive rebate, so we'll leave that. Anything else, Counselor Dubic?
Um, it, but just for clarity from our clerk, did, did we still need to select a, a month, or is it June is in there right now, so unless we wanted to change it.
Unless we change it.
Perfect, perfect. And then, uh, just, just, uh, just for, uh, maybe some clarity, what's, what's the thinking behind June versus a, a February? Thank you.
Clerk Van Alstine.
Uh, the bylaw that I used from the Town of Collingwood had June thirtieth, and I was told to use the same one.
Gives, gives people a little more time to. Okay. So do you need a motion to direction to bring that bylaw back? Cause there isn't that motion on here. No, you'll just do that? So I can move on to adjournment?
Through you, Chair Allen. Once the committee, the whole minutes are approved and all associated recommendations, that will provide me the directions to amend the bylaw and bring it back to council.
Got it. Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, there's a motion here that, or I'd like a motion that the committee adjourn until the call of the chair at eleven oh five. Mayor McQueen is moving that, Counselor Allwood, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nancy and Stuart for your presence and.